Welcome to Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for 9:00 AM Wednesday, December 8th, 2021. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is Citizen Input for Items Not on the Agenda. So I see that we have Ron Bozell as the first one on the list here this morning. Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you for having me, Commissioners. I'm Rondo, as you know. I consider myself a political activist in this town, a community volunteer. And, you know, I know that you guys get paychecks and you're not unpaid well, but I consider you, I describe you the same way. I see you in my mind the same way, and I thank you for that service. I thank you for continuing to have open dialogue with our community about a lot of things, maybe some things you don't want to talk about, sometimes things that I do. Today, I just want to talk about real briefly something that sometimes is on and off in the forward conversation about transparency in government. And it's really hard to expect that from representatives far away, but you're here right in front of me. And so I have the most availability in my own thinking process and emotional process to trust you because I can look you in the eye. Can't really look you in the face, but that's another issue altogether, but we will discuss it another time. I have been disappointed by other locals who have given a speech at the beginning of a meeting about transparency and then three sentences later prove that their honesty and integrity was to be questioned. I don't feel that way with any of you. And I want to continue that relationship, and I appreciate that no matter what comes in the next campaign season, if some of you are more aware than others, some of you are more invested in this next year. We are neighbors and we are friends, and that's how I will always speak to all of you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, Ms. Toby Bayard. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Hello, Deschutes County Commissioners. My name is Toby Bayard and I live at 20555 Bowery Lane, which parallels Hunnell Road to the east. Others have talked about the new road alignment for Hunnell Road, its features, what they do and don't want to see, the strip takings of properties on Hunnell, et cetera. I'm here to talk about something a bit different, and that is preserving rural lifestyles. I think of how many of us who live in central Oregon, in Deschutes County, whether it be Band, Redmond, Three Rivers, or Lapine, are concerned about the loss of that which is most dear to us, our rural quality of life, that is being eroded by the relentless development that's taking place in this region. According to the U.S. Census Bureau and the Portland State University Research Center, Deschutes County grew by almost 26% in 10 years. The county added more than 40,000 people. And this results in a loss of quality of rural life. I want to appeal to you as leaders of this county to consider the impact that the Hunnell Road project will have on this community. I know that many of you who, I know many of those who live on Hunnell Road, and I've known them for years, and there's very little turnover in properties. Most people have, like Michelle and me, lived on their land for well over 20 years. It's a very tight and established community. Recently, KTVZ aired a clip entitled, "Hunnell Road Improvements Could Be a Win-Win for County and Residents If Safety Concerns Are Addressed." I submit that it is not a win-win for a rural community that in order to visit neighbors will soon have to cross a paved road with a speed limit of 35 miles an hour, which most people will ignore, choosing to drive 50 miles an hour or more. At least 12 property owners are facing imminent domain condemnation to remove curves, which will allow traffic to travel faster. Clearly, curves limit speeding. There will be no crosswalks as exist on the Bend Parkway, Third Street, and other much smaller collectors. The HUNS' request for crosswalks was denied. I ask you to instruct the Deschutes County Road Department to keep the curves and stay within the existing right-of-way as much as possible as stipulated in Oregon statewide planning Goal 12. Goal 12 guidelines say this, "Transportation systems to the fullest extent possible should be planned to utilize existing facilities and rights of way." It also says that major transportation facilities should avoid dividing existing economic farm units, EFU zoning, unless no feasible alternative exists. Finally, I want to thank you for heeding the HUNS' recommendation by incorporating center islands, reactive speed signs, and a three-way stop sign at Rogers Road that will help to limit travel speeds. Please keep Goal 12 in mind as you proceed with the redesign of Hunnell Road, and please continue to work with the Hunnell United Neighbors to find the best solution. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Toby.
Edward Patera. Thank you for joining us, Ed.
Good morning. Thank you for holding these Citizen Input Sessions. My name is Ed Patera. I and my wife have owned a home at 25 Quater Lane in Sun River for 10 years. It is my understanding that in the coming months, you, as Commissioners, will be making budget decisions which ultimately determine the nature of recycling services available to homeowners and how much homeowners will be paying for trash and recycling services in southern Deschutes County in Sun River. My impression is home-based collection services may be offered residential property owners. That would be really good. Recycling household materials continues to be strongly supported by people living in and coming to the Sun River area. Since 2018, there has been public debate on how to collect household recyclables. For example, in 2020, approximately half the Sun River homeowners supported recyclables pickup from their home instead of having to bring them to a drop-off depot, which is the only current approach. In 2021, about half of the homeowners rejected a $900,000 project for a new expanded drop-off depot that the county required to be open to all of Deschutes County. Decisions made at the county level impact the availability, cost, and effectiveness of recycling. As you review the budget proposal, please consider the input of residents who actually pay for their services, approving realistic terms of service, and the transparency and fairness of trash collection and recycling fees. More detailed comments for your consideration were submitted via email yesterday. On a more personal note, I have had communications with county personnel since 2018 on recycling, and more recently, on related land use matters. The folks working for the county have consistently been professional and respectful. It is good to see those traits in government. You all are to be congratulated for fostering them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
So, a topic that was our agenda for Monday, and it's going to be other items today. We have received eight emails in support of a letter of interest for the AOC/LOC Joint Office of Homelessness. So I'm just going to acknowledge those eight letters, and we are going to be talking about that as other items today. So as I say, these are eight emails in support. Is there anybody else for any topic that's not on the agenda? And is there anyone on Zoom or phone numbers?
Phone number, but I don't.
Okay, so yeah, I will just acknowledge that I did provide the phone number for someone. He wasn't offering public testimony today, but hopefully he's listening and hearing our meeting clearly today. Okay, so at this time, we'll move to Consent Agenda.
So move Consent Agenda.
Second. So there's two items on the Consent Agenda today. With that, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Item number three, Notice of Intent Award Contract for Owner's Representative Services for Courthouse Expansion Project. Courthouse Expansion, oh, that's a big one.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Lee Randall, Facilities Director.
Dan Hopper, Project Manager.
And I will just mention that Dan does have an appointment, and so we'll move quickly with his portion. And I'll be available, obviously, for any further discussion as needed. But so just to provide some background, we were in front of the board in July, and we presented the courthouse expansion project. We then, in the board, directed us to present to the Facilities Project Review Committee regarding the project, and also to move forward with owner's representation solicitation, and as well as to begin work on the findings of fact for the construction manager, general contractor, and then begin looking toward proposals for architectural and engineering services. So we met with the Facilities Project Review Committee in August, and they provided feedback. And then through October and November, Dan oversaw our requests for proposals for owner's rep. And so that brings us here to you today. And Dan will touch a little bit on the process, but essentially, we did a publicly advertised request for proposals for those services. Two of, or three of the citizen members of the Facility Project Review Committee served on that selection committee. We had a great cross-section of proposers, and the committee ended up selecting, and the highest scoring proposer was Plan B Consultancy of Lake Oswego. I'll let Dan talk just a little bit about the process, and then we'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
Yeah, we had a request for proposals for owner's representative services. Went out on October 1st with the due date of their proposals on October 26th. At that time, we had a committee of five review the proposals, and then we narrowed it to interviews to two firms. And then after conducting those interviews with the two firms, we narrowed it down. The highest ranking firm was Plan B, and that's what we're going after for Notice of Intent to Award today.
Great, thank you. So this is that public process of selecting someone, letting everybody who is involved in the application process know that a selection's been made, and then also offering, you know, opportunity if somebody doesn't agree with how the process went, a little window of time.
Correct, correct. So if the board moves forward with approving the Notice of Intent to Award today, there'll be a seven-day protest period, and then after that, we'll enter into a contract with Plan B. We're finalizing the negotiations, and we will be after that protest period of the contract. And we expect, and really what we're doing is just kind of getting very specific with the scope of services that they'll provide, what our expectations are, and what their deliverables will be beyond their proposal. So we'll be finalizing that contract after the protest period, and then the board will see that administratively. And we believe that range of cost will be between $395,000 to $425,000. And that's the, that's the range that we're within right now, and we expect will stay.
Were all candidates expected to be within that range?
A portion of their proposal related to their pricing structure, and so we really kind of had, those kind of fell along two lines. There were a group that were significantly higher than that range, and then there was a group that was in the range with Plan B. And as the committee, that was just one part of the selection criteria and a portion of the scoring. And as, but that is one item that the committee looked at and felt that Plan B was in line with the services that we would require.
Oh, I want to thank Dan for his service.
Thank you.
Truly, I appreciate it. And I'm wondering, who were the two people from the faculty, or the Facility Project Review Committee that served on this? Because I really, I'm so happy we have that committee now. I've seen some of their work, and it is outstanding. So who were the two?
Yep, so we had three members, Mark Nishaw, Mark Kelly, and, no, I'm sorry, we had just those two members, and then the presiding judge for Deschutes County.
Okay, because it says two members of the...
Yep, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Two members.
We have other members of the committee lined out to be on the RFP process for scoring for the design services, which is coming up next, and then the CMGC services, which is after that.
Great, all right. Thank you for that information.
I wanted to ask about how the, what this owner's rep structure, like how the decisions about who receives the award for construction will work. Does the, does the owner's rep basically kind of run that process for us? But then, how much are yourselves and members of that Facility Review Committee engaged in the actual selection of the, you know, the construction contractors?
Yeah, great question. So it'll proceed similar to the way this selection process did. So the owner's rep will kind of play the role that Dan did in organizing and orchestrating the process. And then we will have a similar selection committee with likely two members of the Facility Project Review Committee, someone from the courts, possibly someone from the sheriff's office, and then someone from facilities. And so we'll have a similar makeup of a committee that will do the scoring of the proposals and the interviews and conduct that process, but with the owner's rep coordinating the process.
And I would send them templates that we've used in the past for RFPs for design services as well as CMGC, because both of those documents have been through legal counsel review. And then they would just modify with the actual scope of work specific to the project.
Thank you. What, while I'm thinking about it, what do we think the timeline is for opening up that bidding opportunity right now?
So in our initial conversation with the owner's rep, they're ready to move very aggressively and quickly with both the selection of the design team and the CMGC. And so we expect those to be issued in January, likely, for the design team, and then follow with the CMGC within a few weeks in February. So we're looking at the next eight to 12 weeks being very busy.
Exciting, thank you.
Okay, so yeah, Notice of Intent to Award Contract to Plan B Consultancy for Owner's Representative Services. It'll be a document for Chair Signature.
I move approval of document number 2021-980, Notice of Intent to Award Contract to Plan B Consultancy for Owner's Representative Services.
I second the motion.
Any other discussion?
It just sounds a little funny, Plan B. Like, what happened to A?
It is, we actually brought that up in the interview process, but it sounds a little counterintuitive, but...
It does.
I mean, you know, one way to look at it is, you know, our in-house staff, Dan, is Plan A, and now we're going to Plan B.
That's correct.
We'll go with that. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Yeah, as I say, thank you very much, Dan Hopper, for what you've done with the county, and good luck in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Truly, Dan, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number four, Construction Manager General Contractor Findings for the North County Campus.
So our second item relates to our North County Campus, Redmond. Those properties were purchased this summer. We're moving forward with, with design. We've already, through the similar process we talked about before, Pinnacle Architecture of Ben has been selected as the architect for the first space, which is at 244 Kingwood. And then we'll be also moving forward with development of 236. And so there's several different suites in those buildings. They're going to be phased over time. But the document you have in front of you today is a findings of fact for use of the Construction Manager General Contractor process for selecting a general contractor for the project. The, as we all know, we have a very challenging construction environment, and that is one of the significant drivers for proposing to use this process. The CMGC process allows us to use a qualifications-based selection process in order to select the general contractor. And then one of the great advantages is that they are onboard early and are able to work closely with the design team, address any construction issues that may come up early in the process, and then also have input on long lead items and construction materials. Especially right now, we're seeing, as you all know, extremely challenging procurement issues when it comes to things like HVAC equipment, windows, and everything that goes into the remodel of these buildings. And so that's one of the main drivers for us proposing to use this process, is to help address some of the challenges in the, in the construction environment currently.
So this is a process of, yeah, bringing that general contractor onboard, getting to know the facility, being able to think through the implementation of what's being proposed of the architect. And these are tenant improvements, basically, in existing buildings also. So it's still going to be a pricey project, but yeah, we want to do it right the first time and be very efficient in the process.
And one thing to note is that it is a qualifications-based selection process for the general contractor. The majority of the work that's performed, is performed by subcontractors, and that is all competitively bid. And this just allows us to bring on that overarching prime contractor early, and then help, have them help provide input on the project.
Great. And this is that moment with the findings to say, this is how we're going to proceed with this project. This is, because then the selection process will follow this.
So at what point in time will we have the entirety of both buildings? I know that there's still a current lease in the one building, I believe the southern building. So when is that going to happen? And I'm sure that will figure into the complication of this project.
So 244 Kingwood, there is currently a leaseholder for about a quarter of the building, and that, they are under a three-year lease that just started, with a three-year option to extend. The portion of that building that we're looking at for the remodel is about 9,200 square feet, and the remaining of the building is currently leased, and that's essentially leased for the next three years. In 236 Kingwood, there's currently a lease through July of next year for about two-thirds of the building. And then the remainder of that building, we're moving quickly through programming and design for an area that would be used by shared county services. So the portion of 236 is where we've discussed having the clerk's office, the medical examiner, and others have a small presence there of one to two people with shared conference rooms and a shared lobby area, so that departments that have a need to provide services in Redmond but don't need a big footprint can share that area. And then also, we're looking at specific uses for the remainder of the building.
So when the clerk's office is mentioned, I guess I don't have a feel for what kind of services will be up there, and you know, if you have just some high-level information about that.
Sure. I think the idea is that services that people need to do in person in Bend, they could have one or two people there during busy times and provide those services in Redmond, so that someone, say, if they have an issue with a ballot during election time, wouldn't need to drive clear to Bend to resolve that. They may be able to resolve that in Redmond. And so Steve Dennison can speak more specifically to what he sees the needs as being in Redmond, but that's kind of the big picture, is those services that folks typically now have to drive here for, they could, would be available to them without as much travel time.
So are we talking like marriage licenses and passports, too?
Possibly.
I mean, is Steve going to go down to that?
Yep.
Those level of services?
My understanding is they'd want to provide as many of the services that they provide here, they would hope to provide in Redmond.
So my thought there is, yeah, let's just have a little powwow about that in the next couple of months, you know, when it's time and the clerk's office is talking about those services. And I'm sure it'll come around naturally during our budget, at least. But yeah, let's just schedule that up when it's, you know, when they kind of have a feel for what they're going to be offering.
I mean, at first glance, the idea that someone wouldn't have to drive to Bend from Redmond to do, you know, to record a property transaction, I think that people would probably be pretty excited about that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there may be a wonderful opportunity. So let's, yeah, learn about it and promote it. That's exactly what I was thinking.
But it's 14 miles, isn't it? I mean, it's not like it's, it's not like it's for three hours, unless there's a bad accident or something. It's really, it's truly not that far from Bend to Redmond.
Not quite a day's ride on horseback, is it?
No. Well, if you put it in your phone and you think you're going to walk, it could be quite a while, so.
But yeah, just learn about those services, so we can promote them.
Okay.
So yeah, this is going to be by order, so is there?
So I move approval of document number 2021-978, the Construction Manager General Contractor Findings of Fact for the North County Campus 236 and 244 Kingwood Remodel Project.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you. Some good business getting done today. So item nine was replaced, so there's still, I mean, five, at 9:45. I was looking at the time. So yeah, item number five is going to be FTE, Republic Health Clinical Services, nurse practitioner. Just trying to make sure I have the right, the right one, because it was changed. But it looks like, yeah, that's the backup I have here, so Nahad possibly, and Anne Kilty. So these will be people online?
Well, number, number five was pulled.
Okay, yeah, so as I say, I think...
And then, and then there's an addition, number eight, but that's later on in the agenda.
Okay, yeah, so that, okay, I had half the information. I knew we were going to, okay. So we're moving past number five to number six. This will be staff report on, well, the previous number five, it's not there anymore. But item six, Staff Report, Housekeeping Amendments.
Morning, Commissioners. For the record, Kyle Collins, Associate Planner. I am here today for your work session in regards to this year's housekeeping text amendments. You can see the file number up there. I've got a very brief presentation to kind of go through a summary of what the proposed amendments are this year. Feel free to stop me at any time, though, if you have questions, and then I'll, I'll open it up more generally at the end. Just to give some background, the housekeeping amendments, or what we refer to as housekeeping amendments, we typically try to do these on an annual or a biannual basis, depending on how many amendments we find. But ideally, they are intended to correct very minor errors that we find in the code, things like scrivener's errors or reference errors. They're also intended to reinstate omissions, things that were accidentally left out of code. And then finally, to incorporate changes that we can pull in easily from state law legislation and occasionally federal legislation. So the impact of these proposed amendments, there'll be some very minor changes to some of the permitted uses and standards that are allowed in our code, but generally, they are not changing anything at a, at a high level. And there are no particular state statutes or administrative rules or land use goals that apply to these housekeeping changes, again, because they are so minor in nature. Here is a summary on the presentation here of all the affected chapters that would be impacted by the housekeeping amendments this year. I'm not going to go through each one individually, but you can see there's, there's quite a lot. Now to go into the individual amendments themselves, we have one scrivener's error that needs to be corrected. It's in relation to our landscape management combining zone within our land use zoning code. It's just changing the purpose section of this chapter to correct the, the title language that's actually listed there, from land to landscape and landscape management. The next big section is reference errors. These are either internal reference errors, talking about other portions of our code, or external reference errors relating to things like state legislative text. So there are 11 of those, spread throughout multiple areas of our zoning code. They're predominantly within our Title 18 chapter, although there is some in our procedures ordinance as well.
And Kyle, when you, when you say reference errors, it means you're being referred someplace, but we didn't have quite the right location?
That's exactly it, yeah. So it might say, reference another portion of our code, for example, but it's been incorrectly referenced. And so these are just, just intended to line up those references.
Got it, thanks.
The next amendments I'll go through are all related to changes in state law that have happened over the course of the last year. So the first thing I'm going to talk about here is related to House Bill 3024 and the related ORS language. And it prohibits jurisdictions from considering property tax classifications of dwellings that were previously... jurisdictions from considering property tax classifications of dwellings that were previously removed from EFU land or destroyed, demolished, or converted to some, some other type of allowed use within EFU parcels when reviewing applications for replacement dwellings. So the Commissioners might be aware, replacement dwellings are one of the more common files that we work on in exclusive farm use land. If you have a pre-existing lawfully established dwelling, you're allowed to replace that dwelling with a, a new structure in the future and maintain that use. There are some language that was originally included in state law related to how tax classifications affected how we review these replacement dwellings and those have been updated via this House bill. So this is the, the actual section of code that's being amended here. It's our local land use chapter related to exclusive farm use zones. And again, this is just adding in those new tax assessment standards from that House bill and removing the old standards that were originally included. The next thing I'm going to talk about is House Bill 2106 and the related OAR language. And this is changing the established date for any farm buildings that are used, again, in the exclusive farm use zone for dog training classes or testing trials. Originally, it was listed, I believe, as 2013 and that's been updated to 2019. So buildings that were existing as of 2019 can technically be allowed for dog training classes as long as they were there by that certain date and they go through a proper land use channel and review, they can allow those. This is the, the section of code that's being altered here, again, Chapter 1816. Next one I'm going to talk about is House Bill 2844 and the related ORS. And this adds a new farm crop processing use in exclusive farm use zones, provided that that operation uses twenty-five hundred square feet or less in its processing area. So there are no specific citing standards included in this. It's somewhat unique and it was pulled in. I believe this was in 2019, actually, this, this House bill. So we've actually approved one or two of these in the interim just to allow in the state law, but this is just bringing, bringing everything up to code in our, our local language.
So could you run through that scenario again? So processing, it could be a building up to twenty-five hundred square feet?
As long as the processing area itself is less than twenty-five hundred square feet, local jurisdictions have to allow those uses within the exclusive farm.
And then you said, yeah, no citing standards, no conditional use.
Exactly. It is, it is a very open-ended, broad. So none of our normal citing standards that we might apply for other farm crop processing or really any other use can apply to this particular.
Just understanding what you're saying there. Thank you.
Yep.
So could this be anything from like, you know, meat processing to, you know, produce to like hemp to, I mean, you know, any of those kinds of agricultural products or?
So not meat processing there. It still has to fall in the, the normal definition at a state level of what a farm crop processing use is, but it does allow for a very wide variety of uses. So hemp processing, I know for sure that we have staff have approved at least one of those. It also falls into, if you wanted, if you wanted to process tomatoes into salsa or something, it would also fall into that particular use. So, so yes, it does allow for quite a wide, wide option of, of potential uses, but there are some carve-outs that don't apply, meat processing being one.
Commercial kitchen? I mean, is this, or is that, is a commercial kitchen something different than?
A commercial kitchen would be something different. So the actual uses that are allowed under farm crop processing are come directly from state statute. And they're specifically, a commercial kitchen would be more, more in line with somebody that was actually running a business directly from their property, is I think generally how you would think of that. This is more intended for a farmer that has a farm operation. They want to process something that they're growing on site or as a part of a larger farm operation that they might have. And they just want to process that into some type of value-added product.
Right.
Kind of the wholesale step.
Yes.
Yeah, but I, so I can ask about this later, but you know, Sakari Farms, you know, on Highway 20 between Bend and Sisters, they, you know, for example, like I know, they make salsa from like the stuff that they grow on the farm. And they were, they, it was a pretty arduous process to get through their commercial kitchen, um, land use approvals. And so I'm just trying to figure out whether they could have gone through this kind of a process instead, but.
Uh, it's possible. I, it sounds like there's maybe two different approval processes that we're going through there. So one might be from the Oregon Department of Agriculture in relation to their food processing standards. This is just related to the building that's being utilized for farm crop processing.
Got it. Okay. Yeah. And I can ask more about that later. Thank you.
Of course. The next one I'm going to talk about is related to AR 660-033-0130. And this is, again, related to farm crop processing facilities. Our farm crop processing facilities had, over time, in our local code, come out of compliance with what state law allowed in regards to this. And so this is just a general rewrite of what is allowed under state law for farm crop processing facilities more generally, unrelated to that twenty-five hundred square foot one that we just talked about, and incorporating that state language into our local code. And again, here's the section that would be affected at our local level. Next one I'm going to talk about is also OAR 660-033, but this one is 0130. And this is related to buildings being used for temporary hardship dwellings for farm designated properties. To give the Commissioners the full picture here, in the exclusive farm use zone at a state level, unique from all other zones in the state, existing buildings are allowed to be used for medical hardship dwellings, for example, or just hardship dwellings, in addition to the standard manufactured home or recreational vehicles. Again, provided that they're, as soon as a hardship is no longer available, they're converted back into a non-residential use. And we had actually incorporated this particular OAR language into one area of our code but neglected to bring it in to the actual one of uses permitted outright within the exclusive farm use zone. And so this is just bringing in that same language to both sections of our code where it's relevant. Again, here's the section of code being, being edited and where it's being added in. Next housekeeping amendment I'll talk about is also OAR 660-033. This is 0135. And this adds a provision for seasonal farm worker housing that's been approved prior to 2001 as an acceptable use for all farm designated properties. So as you're reading through our local land use code, for example, we have provisions stated elsewhere that describe no other dwelling being cited on a property in order to be, have a new dwelling approved, whether that's a non-farm dwelling or a farm-related dwelling, comes up in multiple instances. This particular OAR and the relevant language actually does allow one type of existing dwelling to be on-site and to receive other type of dwelling approval. And it has to do with this farm worker style housing that's been approved prior to 2001. So again, this is just bringing in that allowed use from state statute into our local code.
So would that mean a, a specific project that was, had received approval and was constructed prior to 2001 or a type of farm worker housing that was approved or authorized prior to 2001?
It would have to be both approved and constructed. So it has to be existing on, on the site itself. And I'm actually not aware that we have any of these in Deschutes County. I don't think that we've, we've approved any of these. But in order just to, to maintain congruency with the state standards, we're deciding to pull it in. This is the section of code, again, that's being affected, still 1816. The next amendment I'm going to refer to is related to House Bill 2225 and the related OAR language. And this adds in additional standards for template dwellings within our forest use zones. One thing that's important to note here is that these amendments and the associated OAR language actually don't become effective across all jurisdictions until last month, the beginning of November. And so we're a little bit behind the ball here in trying to get these in place. But there were a number of changes made at a state level related to how template dwellings, which is one of the more common types of dwellings approved in forest use zones across the state, and how they're implemented depending on which jurisdiction you're in. So we, we have unique rules that are related to Central Oregon primarily, Crook County and Deschutes County and Jefferson County. And these are intended to bring those new standards into our local code. And this actually affects two areas of our code. We have two forest use zones in Deschutes County. Chapter 1836 is our forest use zone one and Chapter 1840 is our forest use zone Next amendment I'm going to refer to is related to ORS 197-763-6. And this outlines standards for local quasi-judicial land use hearings. This changes the close of record period related to our local process and how we deal with quasi-judicial land use hearings. Specifically, it's dealing with the open record period and what period of time is allowed for applicants to submit final argument. That's, that's the main piece here. So as I'm sure the Commissioners are aware, generally, there's a, a kind of a three-part period, open record at the end of any hearing, you have new evidence, rebuttal evidence, and then a final argument. And that final argument from the applicant is not intended to count against the overall hundred-and-fifty-day clock associated with, with quasi-judicial hearings. And this just aligns those edits with state law. The remaining amendments I'm going to refer to don't really fall into any of the kind of reference scriveners or state law changes. They're just general corrections, clarifications that have been identified by staff. So the first one I'm going to talk about is related to Title 15 and how it refers to the addition of our international fire code that we use as reference for a local fire code. This is actually an amendment we previously made last year and it was unintentionally changed back to its previous form. And so we're, we're actually just bringing it back up to what was already approved. But to give the full picture here, the international fire code is adopted by the state of Oregon as the fire code that governs across all jurisdictions. And then that's subsequently delineated out to individual local jurisdictions to utilize or edit as they see fit. We don't provide any independent Deschutes County specific edits. We just adopt what the state has adopted as the international fire code, as our local fire code. And this just, one, clarifies that that's what we're doing. It references the process wherein the state adopts the international fire code. And it removes specific yearly edition references for the international fire code to prevent the need for future housekeeping amendments, basically. So if the 2019 addition, which is the current one, is amended two years from now, it would require us, under the current language, to go in and actually manually edit our Title 15 amendments to make sure we're still referencing the currently adopted edition of the fire code and how we apply those standards from a, a building safety standpoint. So this is the section of code that's being amended here. Again, it's Chapter 1504. And it just moves, removes that specific yearly edition reference and adds in a reference to how the state adopts the international fire code.
Is that a, a requirement or that's a choice locally to do this?
That was a choice locally. And the primary reason, again, was to avoid the need for repeated amendments to the code every time a new international fire code is actually brought online. So my understanding is these things typically come in kind of two-year cycles. So either this year or probably early next year, there likely will be a new edition of the international fire code. Sometimes there are almost no changes in those new additions, but because right now we have a very specific yearly edition reference in our local code, we effectively have no, no way to point to whatever the currently adopted edition of the international fire code is. We're just stuck with the old standards.
Well, and, yeah, I mean, I haven't studied this, but this could get into sprinkler systems for residential possibly too. Is that true?
It, it covers all the building safety requirements related to fire protection.
So I'm just saying, we could have a, an international fire code requirement that ends up being overlaid to any development that we have resistance to locally, like with, you know, they've gone too far a concept. And I, I'm just a scenario that's out there possibly. Has there been any discussion around that or?
Not, not to my knowledge. That would probably be a question best directed to somebody like Randy Scheid or building official. I think ultimately Randy, as our building official, has a lot of deference in terms of how he evaluates standards. But for as long as I've been here, and I think as long as Randy's been here, we really have relied on the international fire code being adopted by the state of Oregon and then that being disseminated more generally out to local jurisdictions. And I, I think that's fairly common practice.
That's something we can learn about a little bit. Thank you.
Of course. The next big change I'm going to talk about is in relation to our final plat recording process. And this is going to affect Chapter 1724. So the final plat process, as the Commissioners might be aware, is usually the very last step in a process for creating a subdivision or a partition. It's actually formally having the lines on the drawn, drawn on the ground in any type of land division process. Right now, our code references cartography fees and blue line copies of final plat documents when submitting an application for final plat. We haven't required those for quite a while. It's just not our contemporary process. There's no specific cartography fee. We generally only require a single copy of a final plat document. And so this is just intended to reflect our previous practice and how we're actually handling final plat applications now.
Is blue line copies just referring to taking a, an original and making
Like a blue, yeah, blue marker that somebody pre-computers is, I think.
Yep. That's what I'm, yeah, it's just not even our practice at all anymore.
Yeah. So this is the section of code, again, that's being affected, Chapter 1724, just related to all of our final plat recording procedures. The next big amendment I'm going to talk about is in relation to our Chapter 18116 and the legislative intent associated whether a location change related to marijuana production or processing facilities is a little bit unclear as, as it's currently written. So as the language is presently written in this section of our code, it says that a marijuana production or processing facility location change shall not be allowed in any instance because that will relate in some type of negative effect on, on the surrounding environment and or other properties. As written, however, as you can see, it doesn't really go into much detail about what a location change means. There are two broad ways to interpret this. One could be an intra-property change where you're actually talking about moving whatever that approved facility is around on the same property, or an inter-property change where you're talking about actually transferring it to a brand-new property. Looking through the, the original legislation and how this was adopted, it's not entirely clear, but it seems likely that it was mostly intended to apply to an inter-property change to prevent somebody from, let's say, receiving a marijuana production or processing approval and then subsequently buying a new property and trying to transfer that use onto the old property rather than having it approved on one property. And let's say some catastrophic incident happens and they need to, to move that facility twenty feet further north. As presently written, someone could easily make the argument that even that very minor change is not allowed under our local code. So this, this entire amendment is just intended to clarify intent, if the board allows, that it's just intended to apply to intra-property changes, or excuse me, inter-property changes being the, the not allowed use. Next big amendment I'm going to talk about is in relation to our Title 19, our Bend Urban Area zoning code. And this is Chapter 1976. At least two of the Commissioners, I believe, will be familiar with this particular issue. In that particular chapter, we refer to the Bend Urban Area Planning Commission as a design review body for any type of development that occurs within what's called the Deschutes River Corridor, which is just any land within a hundred feet of the Deschutes River. The problem is, the Bend Urban Area Planning Commission is not a functional review body and hasn't been for quite some time. And so anytime a development might be proposed within this Deschutes River corridor, it's not clear who should be the appropriate review body. It's gone back and forth. I'm aware of only real two examples since this review body has, has been defunct, that this has come up at all. One, I personally worked on, so it happens to be a little bit easier. But it's not entirely clear who should review these projects, whether it should be the Board of County Commissioners, should it just be the planning director, should it be our Deschutes County Planning Commission? And rather than trying to figure out exactly a, a new process for reviewing these proposals, what we've done here is just remove that old reference to the Bend Urban Area Planning Commission and added in a reference to how we choose appropriate Commission and added in a reference to how we choose appropriate review bodies for all of our other land use proceedings. So this, whether it's quasi judicial or legislative, all it does is point to that same section of code wherein we choose appropriate review bodies regardless of what, what this is. So it removes that defunct review body and adds in the normal process wherein we, you would say, well, you have to go to a hearings officer first, and then it would go to the board, or does it go to the Planning Commission first and then go to the board? And it just adds in that congruency across all of our, our different land use reviews.
So generally, there'd be either administrative decision, hearings officer, maybe Planning Commission, or the board. I'm thinking, I think those would be generally the four options, is that?
Those are the three options, really. Yeah, so for legislative amendments, for example, it always goes before the Planning Commission first and then is referred to the board. For quasi judicial hearings, it generally follows the hearings officer and then the board, board proceedings.
And Kyle, I mean, this, when this refers to the Deschutes River corridor, does this cover all the way from South County, you know, headwaters areas to the, you know, to the, to the north boundary, North County boundary, I mean, or?
This only applies in our Title 19 areas, which are all the areas that are adjacent to the city of Bend's urban growth boundary ultimately. So we're talking about our urban area reserve zone, our, the West Side transect zone is also included in, in this. So it's a kind of unique zoning designation that applies to properties that were originally proposed to be pulled into the city of Bend. Through state challenges, ultimately, those areas were excluded from a previous UGB expansion by the city of Bend and still maintained as a Deschutes County jurisdiction. But ultimately, they're held in kind of a reserve, an intermediary zone, where ultimately they likely will be pulled into the city, and they have their own sets of rules that apply. It's, it's, it's a somewhat confusing area, but it, this only really applies on the western boundary of the city of Bend, for the most part.
And somewhere else, it describes geographically what the bounds of this are?
That, that's correct. Okay. So if you're talking about going further south or further north along the Deschutes River corridor, at a certain point, you'll hop into our Title 18 areas, which covers the vast majority of other properties in the county. So this doesn't apply to Deschutes River Woods, or Sun River, or anywhere near Le Pine. Those, those are all excluded from this particular amendment.
Thank you.
The next amendment I'm going to talk about is, and related to our augmented service hours at our main, our main center across the street here. So starting at the beginning of this month, we've actually changed our operating hours, where we're open to the public, to closing at 4:00 PM rather than 5:00 PM. The board is aware this was done to allow some capacity for staff to actually respond to email requests and phone calls that were kind of stacking up and to allow basically an hour for staff during that period of time to, to actually get back to people in a, in a timely manner. This particular amendment changes our appeals process related to quasi judicial land use matters. So as it's currently written in code, applicants have until 5:00 PM on the 12th day after a decision has been rendered in order to file a formal appeal. This would simply change that hourly reference to 4:00 PM to match what our visitor center hours are and to keep that in line. Another thing that I'll call out that was referenced in the board's memo today is that this particular amendment is actually being separated out from all the other housekeeping amendments in terms of the ordinance it's attached to. We actually propose that if the board were to adopt this amendment, we do so by emergency rather than the normal adoption process and have this come into effect on January 3rd of next year. The reason being, as of right now, we're kind of in an interim period where even though technically we are telling the public we are not open until 5:00 PM as our normal operating hour procedures, because we have to allow for this appeals process, we still, if, if by request, someone wants to come in and file a formal appeal during this interim period, they are allowed to still come into our office and do so. And so this just shores everything up as quickly as possible, starting in the new year.
And so Kyle, that means that all three of us have to vote for it.
Say that one more time.
All three of us must vote for this in order to adopt it by emergency.
That's correct. Yeah, but starting-
Unless there's only two of you here at that meeting.
Oh, okay. So we're not voting today?
It has to be unanimous.
Oh, no, not today, yeah.
Okay.
So this is setting up for a public hearing on this matter, right? This is our homework in preparation for a public hearing on all these amendments being proposed.
That's correct.
So when will that be, next?
The public hearing is slated for next Wednesday.
Wednesday? Okay, and then what day did you say it would be applicable, January 13th or something?
January 3rd, be the first day back in the-
First business day.
But it's not 30 days?
Well, you can have an emergency, it could be immediate, any, any date you put in there.
Just to coincide with the new year.
Yeah, we just selected that specifically for that reason.
Thank you.
Of course. So going into the Planning Commission recommendation, so the Planning Commission held a public hearing on all of these proposed amendments back in November 18th, and following deliberations on that same day, all of the commissioners unanimously recommended approval. And one final thing that I'm going to go into here is a series of forthcoming amendments. So as the commissioners might be aware, we, we kind of compile all of these amendments, state legislative changes, big policy initiatives and things that need to be altered in our code or possibly need to be altered in our code, but not all of them make it into our housekeeping amendments. We have a whole list of what I'm going to call housekeeping-heavy amendments that ultimately need to be adopted and, and proposed, or at the very least discussed by the board at some point in the future. But due to their complexity or the necessity for more detailed policy discussions by the commissioners, these have actually been stripped out of this, this round of housekeeping amendments, but they are going to be forthcoming in the coming weeks as, as a secondary round of legislative amendments. So I won't go through all of these in, in much detail. This is just kind of a summary of what some of those look like. Some of them have to do with our definitions chapter in relation to specifically how we define campgrounds. That's been a big issue that's come up recently. There are more amendments to forest use zones that have come forward at a state level. Over time, our local forest use code has become drastically out of line with what is allowed under state statute. And while we're fixing a very small part of that right now with housekeeping, there are a large range of, of other potential issues that need to be addressed.
Can you give us some examples of that? Like in what way we're, we're out of, we're, we're out of the scope of, of current state?
Some of it has to do with generally the way that dwellings are approved in the forest use zone and the particular standards that apply. So one of the, the housekeeping amendments we're proposing here is related to template dwellings. That tends to be the most common type of dwelling that we see approved in forest use zones. But there are also things like large tract dwellings that have a completely different set of rules that need to apply, and those have, over time, been amended at a state level, and we have either neglected to adopt those, for whatever reason, into our local code. And so while the state statute technically still applies and we still apply those standards, someone were to come forward and apply for a large tract dwelling, makes everything much more easy and transparent if we have everything adopted into our local code.
Thank you.
Some of the other big things that we're looking at are related to our residential uses within transitional areas with the airport. This is just kind of a strange section of code within our airport safety zone. Right now, we have sections of our airport safety zone that don't allow residential uses, but they allow all types of uses, and we think that's probably an oversight, some type of error that was included in code unintentionally. We've been having a lot of discussions in relation to our yard setback standards, things that should be exempt from our yard setback standards. How do we define what should be exempt and not exempt from our yard setback standards? And again, this is something that requires some more detailed policies, policy discussion with the commissioners to figure out what types of development they'd actually like to see exempt from our yard setback standards. And then finally, we have a whole list of House Bill, Senate bills that have been adopted over roughly the last three years that need to be included in some way. Not going to go through all of these in detail. Some of them are related to temporary replacement RV housing after natural hazards. That's a big one that just came about in the 2020 legislative session. The Telecommunications Act at a federal level needs to be included in some way within our local land use code. This is related to how we approve cellar communications towers, for example. There are specific federal, what we call shot clock standards, so a timeline by which local jurisdictions actually have to approve these types of development. And right now, that is in no way referenced in our local code. And so unless you are very savvy and new to go to the Telecommunications Act and all the federal agencies involved in that, you would have no, no idea how to apply those. So again, that's a much broader discussion that needs to be had with the, the commissioners that was, is being discussed in the background, but it's not ripe enough to bring to the commissioners at this point. And as I said, we have the public hearing on all these upcoming housekeeping amendments slated for next Wednesday on the 15th. And with that, I will open it up more generally to, to questions from any of the commissioners.
Any other questions?
No questions.
In preparation for next week, thank you so much.
Of course.
Item number seven, Cannabis Advisory Panel Quarterly Agenda.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, Peter Gatauski, Community Development Director. I've prepared a draft Cannabis Advisory Panel agenda, just to receive any feedback or input if you had any questions for those here attending in person and, and others who may be listening or watching online. The Board of County Commissioners established a Cannabis Advisory Panel last, in October, and in part due to legislation related to House Bill 3295, creating a Cannabis Advisory Panel not only affords certain designated members of the Cannabis Advisory Panel to provide observations and comments and recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners pertaining to marijuana-related matters, public safety. It also puts Deschutes County in a position to collect marijuana revenue that's, that's generated in our county in the rural areas. And one of the requirements when you appoint a Cannabis Advisory Panel is they, they have to meet quarterly. And so the Board of County Commissioners, earlier this fall, went through a process and appointed a Cannabis Advisory Panel. In the memorandum, there's a link to a designated website for those who want more information about who's on the panel. The packet that was established in October is there as well. So recognizing that the Cannabis Advisory Panel meets quarterly, staff has prepared an, an agenda, and I've identified a date, just to the extent that the board has any opinions about that as well, for January 24th at 6:00. I, I think it's important to let the board know that I went out and reached out to several colleagues in, in Deschutes County, you know, Dustin Miller with our sheriff's office, Jessica Jacks, and DeeDee Holcomb, and Dr. Will Berry, who are in health services in different capacities. And the, the recognition that I had in coordinating with, with these experts who have some responsibility in the work that they do, whether it's with adolescents or clinical issues related to psychiatric issues that have some affiliation with marijuana, or public safety as it pertains to marijuana, illegal marijuana grows, that the recognition that I had is it's going to be important to, I think, designate agendas, to have a singular keynote speaker. These are really important topics that warrant a presentation to the Cannabis Advisory Panel, opportunities for question and answering, and allows the information to be more fully digested. If there's follow-up information that one wants, they can ask for it, and we can, we as an organization can bring information back. I will say, initially, I was like, probably a little too ambitious in my conceptualization of this opportunity. I was thinking, oh, we'll have multiple keynote speakers, and we'll, it'll be this dynamic agenda. And I quickly realized, as I just noted, that that doesn't make a lot of sense. And so what I tried to do for your consideration, or just keeping you in the loop in terms of the thought process that I've had, is it made sense to have one keynote speaker, although the agenda for January 24th, I have Adam Smith, Assistant Legal Counsel, who can provide a brief update on the estimates for marijuana revenue. So I want to recognize that he is, would be a keynote speaker, but really, the, the majority of, of, of the agenda for the 24th, outside of electing a, a chairperson, reviewing minutes, kind of housekeeping matters, is to allow Dr. Will Berry to share his experiences in, in health services as a clinical psychiatrist, to talk about the challenges that he's seeing or the, his responsibilities with certain residents of ours who are experiencing real, real challenges mentally, and his experience with, with those clients or, or patients as it relates to marijuana. And then in subsequent meetings, that my thought process was, is that we can bring in, you know, DeeDee Holcomb, Jessica Jacks, to talk about what the county's been doing with adolescents, and, you know, in terms of outreach and education as it pertains to a controlled substance. And then, as I mentioned, I, I reached out to Dustin Miller, who's a detective with our sheriff's office. At some point, we can bring in public safety. Again, I share all this with you just because I think it's going to be important to meter out these, these experts in, in our organization to share their experiences so we can have a worthwhile conversation and dialogue with our Cannabis Advisory Panel. So that's probably more than you wanted to know, but I'm certainly interested in, in your thoughts about the agenda, if you feel like that's, that's an acceptable approach. And, and then the date for January 24th. That's, that's a Monday. It's the week after Martin Luther King holiday, and keeps us on, on track for these quarterly meetings. So, thank you.
Peter, I'm really appreciative of the fact that you're going to have Dr. Will Berry speak, and that meeting will be available to the public, will it not? Because I've had the privilege of hearing Dr. Berry speak over the last couple of years and his knowledge and expertise. And I remember the quote from him a couple of years ago, he never imagined, when he graduated from medical school, that he would be spending so much time regarding marijuana. And that's not, what he's doing is not, you know, it's, it's quite impactful, and especially for the youth of Deschutes County. So thank you for having Dr. Berry be first.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. And yes, the meetings are, are, are public meetings. They're, they'll be available to, to attend in person and also virtually or remotely. So we'll, yes, we'll, we'll, if I get the direction from the board, we'll, we'll set, we'll confirm this agenda, and, you know, I can work with Morgan and our new Public Information Officer, to the extent that there's an opportunity to announce the, the next panel on January 24th. So we certainly welcome the public's participation and certainly observing and listening in to the, these, these conversations that are going to be occurring in Deschutes County. And then, as you'll note in the agenda, both the one we had in October and the one that's proposed for January, there's opportunities at the end of the agenda, agenda for some public comment, for those that are, are listening to the meeting or, or attending in person or remotely, that they can offer some, some comments or questions, you know, to, to welcome their, their interest and to respond accordingly.
The other thing, Peter, is that I know we're in a short, short session in February, but I know Rob Ovatt, legal from AOC, is working on regulations. We have, what, is it nine counties in Oregon now that have the cartel? And especially in southern Oregon, you know, we had our 49 green houses here in Deschutes County. So that might be a, you know, after we see if there's anything they can do to give the law more teeth. So we might want to move Dustin up if he has any insight into what's going to happen. But I know Rob is seriously working on it. Wasn't what they imagined would be happening, but it is clearly happening.
Yeah, I wanted to pick up on that theme. I, during our first, during our first cannabis advisory, during our first Cannabis Advisory Panel meeting, there was a huge amount of interest from panel members in focusing in on how do we crack down on black market marijuana production and, and, and sales? And I, I very much appreciate the, the intent with the presentation by Dr. Berry and bringing in people who can talk about the, the treatment- presentation by Dr. Berry, and bringing in people who can talk about the, the treatment and rehabilitation end of the, of the issue. But I got the impression that people were very interested in seeing marijuana tax revenues being used to help with efforts to crack down on illegal marijuana production and sales. And so I, I kind of feel like that should be a focus sooner for the panel than, than later. So I'm very interested in the, the presentation that, that Dr. Berry is, is preparing to give. I, I, yeah, I'm trying to figure out how we could do, you know, you kind of do it all, but, but really dive into this, this issue of, you know, how do you crack down on illegal marijuana production. For that discussion, I think we need the Sheriff's Office. I think we need code compliance. I think we need the DA's office, you know, and others who are involved in that, you know, drug interdiction world. Because we are hearing about cartels operating in the state of Oregon, and the, the massive scale of some of these illegal marijuana production facilities is, it's, it's, it's a real serious concern in, in my mind. So if we could, you know, my suggestion would be that we do some kind of panel, you know, a panel focused on that at this, at this next meeting. And, you know, maybe we could offer the, the Dr. Berry presentation as sort of a, an add-on, you know, a pre-meeting that people can, people could attend if they're interested, or, or something like that. So that, you know, people have the option of accessing all of this information and getting into all of these discussions sooner than later.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. I think the, I look forward, if the direction is to, to elevate, you know, the, the public safety aspect as it pertains to legal grows, I can certainly begin coordinating with, with the Sheriff's Office and Dustin Miller. I, I think the, and again, if the board wants to have a significantly larger agenda at these Cannabis Advisory Panels, you're welcome to direct staff to structure it that way. I will just acknowledge respectfully that each of these topics are significant. And I, I think you're, it would be, the board would be well, well-served to think about how much information, how many topics you want to provide to, to this advisory panel. Again, just because I think the subject matter is so significant, and I think it, just in talking to colleagues, as, as I mentioned at the front end of this presentation with DeeDee and, and Dr. Barry and Jessica Jacks, I do worry that there could, you want to be mindful that if you bring in an assortment of topics from different, with different themes, I, I don't want to see, I think you want to be mindful that you could have competing dialogues, competing narratives. Maybe that's okay. But just the thought process that I've gone through the last couple of weeks, I found myself really seeing benefits or utility in, in focusing on, on one specific theme, a meeting, just because the, the, the subject matter is, is so significant, and warrants a robust conversation among the panelists. But that's just your staff respectfully offering that thought process.
Well, having that in April clearly makes sense. If we know what's, what the legislature did in February, we will know. And then, and that's, you know, I think that's really incredible. Maybe, you know, just a bit preview at our January meeting, like, hey, we are actually, we want you to come back in April because we're going to know what's, what our legislature has done. We know they, they clearly recognize we've gotten national attention on the black market issues, the cartel issues in Oregon. And people want to know that something is going to change that course. So, I don't know. That's, you know, I just feel like, hopefully legislature will do something.
I, if the legislature is ready to do more, that is great. But, I mean, we've heard in some of the grant application presentations that have come up in the last few months, that we have, we have, you know, an integrated team in Deschutes County right now that is working on this problem, and that the scale of the problem is massive, and they don't necessarily have the capacity that they need to tackle it right now. I mean, April is five months away. You know, what, what kind of work could be getting done in between now and April? I don't, I don't think we need to wait. And, you know, one of the intentions, one of the purposes of this Cannabis Advisory Panel is to determine where we are going to allocate these tax revenue resources that are coming in from, you know, that we are, that we now have access to again. My understanding is that prior to the time when we stopped receiving those revenues, we were spending a substantial portion of those on these drug interdiction-type efforts. And I think it's entirely consistent for us to continue that, that, that practice. We will, I mean, when, when we, my understanding is we will start receiving revenues, those revenue dollars, early in 2022. And we should be deciding, we should be using our Cannabis Advisory Panel to decide immediately how to use those funds.
Well, item number four is that revenue overview. I don't know that this is a decision-making body, but the discussion that could happen there can set direction for us as a Board of Commissioners for those investments.
Yeah, they, they will be making recommendations. But without, without understanding how the county uses dollars to address, what I heard from them was, one of their highest priorities, interdiction of black market marijuana production, they don't know how to recommend or advise us on how to spend the funds.
So we're just talking about it, yeah, agenda items for January 24th. You know, item number four is the revenue overview. That could really spin out into a lot of the discussions. That could be the catch-all for some of this. If we want to put more direction to it specifically, that would be the choices of today's discussion. One of my thoughts is it, kind of the season. So think about, you know, this is end of January. If we wait three more months, people probably already made choices. You know, if there was a black market contract of a rural property, hey, we've got a great idea. We'll give you a, you know, a lease fee this year, and don't ask us about what we're doing. You know, I just got to imagine what happened this last year, that we had some people set up so aggressively, and, and the facility that we saw. It's probably happening in January and not April.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I guess if we wanted to, I mean, the revenue overview, you know, if, if, if our goal is to give a general understanding of forthcoming marijuana revenue with that item, I don't think it, it leaves the possibility open for having the discussion. But if we wanted to invite the discussion of, you know, that start to really prompt the discussion of how, how the, the funds are being used, at minimum, I think we could, we could have an additional presentation that, that just focused on the historical use. You know, like historically, when we had $500,000 a year, this is where it was going. Just to give people a, a sense of precedent.
Well, then there's two different ways, you know, I'm thinking if we, you know, maybe it's a percentage. You know, if we had a dollar, how would you split it up, kind of discussion for, for the group? Because, you know, whatever the revenue is going to be, it'll be. But then maybe it's just a simple percentage discussion, too.
Yeah. No, I, I would support, I would support setting up the panel to perform that function, which is their legislatively sculpted to, 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 you know, understand how the revenue is, could be spent, and to give us some recommendations.
So do you want to, yeah, propose change in this agenda right now as a board? As I say, I'm, and I'm supportive, you know, a little bit more content under the revenue overview. So this is, you know, with Adam Smith talking about it, that's, that's really not the policy. But we could have, I'm thinking maybe two, two steps. You know, this is, when we heard we were going to get X amount, this is how we started the percentages. Do you agree with, or would you change this percentages? You know, relative to 100%, what would the percentages be? Maybe that's a little exercise that we could offer them. Because then, you know, here it is, one piece of paper, out of 100%, you know, we would move this line over here, or, or, you know, if it's going two or three different ways, would you change the percentages? Keeps it simple. So that'd be a follow-on of item number four. Maybe it is five, and we add an item. And it doesn't need to be, doesn't need to be a big, long, deep discussion. And maybe it's truly just, would you move the percentages around for that group? And it's practicing, too, you know, because they're going to be able to do this quarterly. I guess for us, it would be an annual discussion about if we had revenue in a 12-month period, how would we schedule it into our budget? So doing it in January and April would be the times to do it in preparation for next year's budget.
When might we expect that first check, Dave? Do you have any idea? Because honestly, we had the meeting, you know, a couple of months ago. That was our practice meeting. We wanted to be sure we were going to be getting our money again. But when will the checks start? Because remember the billions that the state's being sued over the timber? Those people haven't seen any money. So I'm just wondering, when will the, do we have any idea? Does anybody?
The new distributions, I think, would be in March, is what I had heard. But for the, would begin, the first distribution would be in March for '22.
I remember Tom used to have to fill out a form, and then the money would follow after that form was submitted.
Right.
So would the form be submitted then in March, you think?
Well, the form historically was done, I believe, in December, if I'm not mistaken, the online thing that, that Tom did every year.
Well, he didn't, I think he did it quarterly. I remember he had like, it seemed like it was a quarterly application.
The payment, the payment.
Because it stopped in September.
There, there are quarterly payments.
Right. No, it's a quarterly submittal.
The payments are, I don't recall Tom submitting quarterly, though. I believe he did that annually.
I think he did it quarterly. Because I remember, when we changed it in the middle of summer, and the September one, that's when the money stopped.
Well, there, there may be two different things. I mean, the, the payments may very well come quarterly, but Tom may have been filling out paperwork that you only need to fill out once a year.
He did the online thing once a year. That was an issue in the current lawsuit, that it got done differently this past year, and the state was trying to use that as a tool against us. But yeah, I don't know for sure. The last I had heard was March.
I, I haven't heard from any other counties that their, their marijuana tax revenue payments are stalled or not coming. It sure seems like the, the counties that have kind of been, been with the flow of the state, you know, over the last couple of years, are still receiving their quarterly payments. So whenever, you know, whenever the legislation specified, we would become active. I would assume that we will start to get our payments.
Right. Our understanding is, since we have this Cannabis Advisory Committee in place, that we're, we're effective, we're, January 1, we become able to start drawing the money. We qualify for that.
I think, I think House Bill, right, 3295 require, I mean, I'm sure it's just a formality, but requires some documentation, right? Validation that we've, we've executed this, the law to take advantage of, of receiving marijuana revenue. And I can't remember the specifics offhand, but to what extent that, when that documentation is submitted, and when it triggers the quarterly payments, you know, obviously, we'll, we'll have a better understanding in the, in the new year. My understanding, and this could be imperfect, is that prior to the, the state law that changed how various marijuana revenue is being distributed, I think, right, some of it is getting distributed to, at a state level for, for prevention. Right? We once had $500,000, right, was, was our revenue amount, and then it was reallocated. And that has lowered our allocation to approximately $200,000 a year. So you're looking at 50, all things being equal, right, $50,000 a quarter. Again, just as, as you're looking to the panel to provide guidance, it's, 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 it is a, it's not insignificant, but it pales in comparison to what we were once receiving.
And that'll, I, I mean, I imagine that will be part of the discussion. If we bring up the historical allocation, you know, we will need to emphasize to people, we are working with much less money now. But these are some of the ways that we've used the money in the past. And then we could all, I mean, you could go on, and you could go the next step and say, we've seen various grant proposals submitted recently. We think that the odds of getting those funds are this. And then, so our, our drug interdiction capacity, you know, external funds, we think is this. And, you know, here's how 50,000, 100,000 of, of marijuana tax revenue could help. I, I, I think if, when we start to open it up, it is a, it's a pretty in-depth discussion to have about how to allocate these tax revenues. So I, that, that's why I'm just kind of urging us to start sooner than later.
Or Measure 110 is taking care of, you know, health and addiction issues, and, and this is, it ends up just being one bucket for public safety, black market issues. You know, maybe it doesn't have to be that deep. You know, if, if, if one, if one side is kind of taken care of because of 110, maybe it's truly just black market focus, you know, public safety focus.
Yeah. No, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts here. So, you know, understanding what, what we're already doing, what resources are available for this whole scope of work of, you know, of, of treatment, prevention, of law enforcement, it's, it'll take us a little while to unpack all that.
So how about, item number four refers to marijuana revenue overview. So we can, just like I was just throwing out there, the fact that, you know, we had a, a percentage discussion, you know, percent of 100, and it was a, you know, bigger number. Now it's going to be a smaller number. So that could all fit under that kind of revenue overview. I don't, I don't know that the outcome's going to be a policy decision yet. Maybe, maybe it is, maybe it isn't. But my other thought is a public safety report, possibly. You know, when we talk about the black market, we saw we have specific activity that was, you know, you know, stopped in its tracks this summer by the Sheriff's Office Drug Enforcement Team. Maybe it's just a simple report on that. Because remember, this is a partnership with the industry. You know, okay, what, here's what, you know, Sheriff's Office, Drug Enforcement, Central Oregon Drug Team found what we did, how we got there, and the outcome from it. You know, and then what's the feedback from that, too? Because maybe that's the way to go.
And we've heard from Detective Miller that sometimes his best sources of, his best tip, tip-offs are actually come from the legal industry. So.
So as I say, I'm thinking, item number four is revenue overview and discussion, which could be that policy choice of 100%. And then there's a new agenda item, public safety report, or, or, you know, what have we seen in the last season, kind of thing.
And I guess, so I'm trying to think about where, where we, when we get to Dr. Berry's presentation, I, I'm, I'm wondering if maybe pulling that to a Board of Commissioners work session, and inviting, and inviting members of the Cannabis Advisory Panel to, to tune in or join us for that, would be another way of just kind of, you know, firing on all cylinders in the, in the near term, as opposed to trying to, having to, you know, prioritize. I, I agree with Peter that, you know, being focused in a meeting is, and not trying to do too much is probably a, a good strategy. But, you know, how do we get this important information in front of the Board of Commissioners, in front of panel members? If Commissioner Dara is interested in having this recorded and, and made available to the public, you know, how do we do, how do we accomplish that more quickly? And a work session seems like an option. We don't even have to work, wait for January, January 24th, then. We could do it sooner.
Well, so, and I'm coming to that conclusion right now, too. Maybe we do it a week or a week and a half before that. If we went down that path, and Commissioner Dara, please share your thoughts. You know, risk of marijuana and THC and the development of psychiatric disorders. If we did that at the Board of Commissioners meeting on a Monday or a Wednesday afternoon, or something for, you know, 40 minutes or an hour, or whatever the, the time would be, then it would be a reviewable, you know, public video that could be followed by anybody.
That's true. And then if people couldn't, you know, if members of the panel were not able to tune in during the work session, it would be readily available to view at their, you know, when they have time flexibility.
Yeah. So try to do it a week or two before. So then there's at least a period of time where you can sit down and follow it. Does that sound?
Oh, anytime. I think we can give Dr. Berry the floor for 40 minutes. I think it's really important for our community. So whenever we can have him. I'm, Peter, I'm really appreciative of having him on the agenda. I, he is truly an expert in the field, and he's young. He has, he's been working, but he's been working for a while, and it's truly, it is a problem. So anyway, yes. If he's willing to come to our meeting, that would be great.
How about we do that, then?
How about we do that, then? So I like the idea that we set up for January 24, Cannabis Advisory Panel. Item number four, marijuana revenue discussion. And item number five is public safety report and discussion. So I mean, this is the table they can all just talk about. And then in support of that meeting, we have Dr. Barry join us at the Board of Commissioners just like this, Monday or Wednesday, a week and a half or two weeks before this. And that'll just be homework for that committee. I don't know if we want to make an agenda item for discussion, you know, asking them to say, okay, now that, now that we've done, Will Berry.
It could just be a work session, I mean.
But I mean, would we want to say, you know, a discussion about what, what we heard from the county's forensic psychology psychiatrist?
Right.
Would we want to put that as an agenda item for discussion for their meeting? You know, ask them to say, okay, your next, next agenda item is to discuss what, what was presented?
And give them a test.
Or just comment on it? Yeah, multiple choice quiz about, did you, yeah.
I don't, I'm not quite sure. But I do believe there are people in our community that need to see this, Dr. Barry's presentation.
So then, yeah, I mean, maybe there's.
If I could just add to that kind of, that agenda that you were just laying out. So when we do the marijuana revenue overview, I do think it would be valuable to get the historical look back at allocations as part of, I guess, item number four then. And then the public safety overview, I do hope that includes not just, you know, the DA's office and the sheriff's office, but also code compliance. Because, you know, clearly, they play an important role in, in these, you know, these black market interdiction efforts as well.
Great.
And there may be, there may be other people who are part of that whole network that I, we haven't mentioned.
Great, that's, you've given staff direction. I can certainly try to execute the agenda as you've, as you've outlined. The one comment that I would have the board think about, as you recognize that the cannabis advisory panels is, is going to meet, will meet quarterly, you know, for the foreseeable future, is we want to make sure, I mean, I think whoever's staffing this in partnership with the board and the panels, we want to make sure, you know, that there's ample, you know, keynote speakers every quarter. And so while you, I think it's very appropriate, and I also had a strong first impression talking to Dr. Barry as well, that at some point, probably, he would be well-served to speak to the, to the panel. So there was a, there's a bit of a strategy, I think, from a staffing standpoint to ensure that now and into the future, that there are notable, robust topics every quarter. And that was when I was outlining, my, my observations in creating the second agenda was not just the short, Dave Doyle's the golfer, I'm not. But I'll use an imperfect analogy. I was not only thinking about the short game, but also the long game to ensure that, you know, not only in the year 2022, but as, you know, in the, in the near term, that we have, there's a real strategy to think about how we're engaging the cannabis advisory panel with, with our colleagues and experts so that that dialogue and that trust and those relationships really, really form and mature. So something for you guys to think about, just, you know, as we go forward.
And I mean, you know, and one of the ways I am thinking about that is, I, I, I don't, I don't know, but my guess is that the presentation that, that, I mean, the way that, the way that the title of this agenda item is laid out, risk of marijuana and THC and the development of psychiatric disorders, that is very important background, but it is not necessarily a policy recommendation presentation. So we could think of this as, as two parts, really. I mean, you know, Dr. Barry could give us the background. And then we could, we could invite him back later on for policy recommendations on, on prevention and treatment. You know, tell us, you know, if, if, if we, if you, if you got to advise us on how to use, you know, some of these tax revenues, you know, what would you spend a dollar on?
And then don't forget about our case for our back revenue. I believe that's still going forward. And that is a significant amount of funding, is it not? I think Adam revised that number. So it will be, well, we'll find out someday. I'm sure it's going to hit the court, isn't it?
Okay, so yeah, if you want to, you know, kind of republish an agenda from the discussion, or, you know, in preparation for this, then we can.
This has been incredibly helpful.
Yeah, no, it's very good.
Work on the logistics. I, I will execute the restructuring of the agenda. I'll let Dr. Barry know as well. And, but unless the board would, would like another check, and I would just go ahead and execute the agenda. I can certainly let you know in emails electronically of how it's all come together. And then I'll certainly let the cannabis advisory panel know to hold the date for January 24th. And obviously, there's, we're six weeks out approximately to prepare a packet. So thank you for your time and the, and the input and the direction today.
Thank you for your work, Perry.
Thank you, Peter. To think that we're going to have Dr. Barry at our meeting, it's a win-win as far as I'm concerned. So thank you very much.
Okay. So as I say, I knew we were switching to item, removing item number five. And I guess it became an item number eight in a version of the agenda. I just didn't get that one. So at this time, it's a request to apply for Central Oregon Health Council grant for immunization quality improvement project.
Hi, commissioners. Let me quickly share my screen. My name is Rita Bacher, and I'm the program manager for Advancement and Protection. I'm joined here by my colleague, Adria Rodriguez-Lavjoy, who is a supervisor for communicable diseases. We are here to present some data on childhood immunization rates, mostly for children under two years in the tri-county area. And we also want to request your permission to apply for a grant to improve our immunization rates. So if you would permit me, I'll go ahead and present what we have for you today.
Thanks for joining us, yes.
Okay, can you see my slides?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. All right. So although many infants and toddlers receive their recommended vaccines by age two, a vast majority or a significant proportion in some communities do not. And this leaves such children and their communities at increased risk for disease outbreaks. According to CDC, we need to have an immunity level of 80 to 94% to keep preventable diseases from spreading in communities. And this number varies by disease, of course. Children under the age of two years are most susceptible to diseases, especially after six months of birth. Within six months, usually, they would have protection from their mother because some immunoglobulins, which are the protective chemicals that the mother passes, still lingers on for a while, for up to six months. Then after six months, they begin to have waning down of these immunoglobulins. So after six months, they are very susceptible to diseases. And unvaccinated children who are exposed to infectious agents may not have built a strong immune system to fight infections at that very tender age. So this results in greater risk of morbidity, mortality, extended school absences, and hospitalizations. And I've been told by Nahad and other public health colleagues that all of you commissioners are advocates or proponents for vaccines. So I already imagine that this is work that you'll be supportive of. So this is, this is a graph showing our immunization rates, especially for the tri-county, Jefferson, Deshute, and Crook County. According to Oregon Health Authority Immunization Program Data from 2020, the percentage of two-year-olds and under that were up to date, as you can see. So for Crook County, they are currently at 75%. But the Shute, the Shute County is currently at 71%. And Jefferson County is currently at 66%. The goal of Central Oregon Regional Immunization Projects and Public Health is to increase childhood vaccinations, especially for children two and under to at least 80% and maintain the rate at or above, above 80%. So these counties that we are trying to improve immunizations on would not be just Crook, Jefferson, and Deshute County. It would include Warm Springs and Northern Clamar Counties as well. So this is a map showing our immunization rates in Oregon. It shows Crook County at 75%, Deshute County at 71%, and Jefferson County at 66%. Although these rates, especially rates for Crook County and Deshute County are slightly above the national average. The current national average, sorry, 2020 national average was 69%. Regional average was 67%. So we were, the Shute County and Crook County especially are still slightly above these rates, but they are well below the goal of Central Oregon Regional Health Improvement Plan, which targets an immunization rate of 80% to control the spread of infectious diseases. And also, the Healthy People 2020 has a target immunization rate of 90% for some vaccines, including measles, mumps, rubella, diphtheria, titanos, and pethosis. So we are still well below these targets. Furthermore, immunization rates for children in Oregon have been negatively affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. Although, according to the Oregon Health System Transformation Metrics, childhood immunization rates declined 6.4% from 2019 to 2020. And percentages of children who received their recommended vaccines has been increasing steadily from 2015 to 2019. And then it started to drop after 2019. Our current rates, what we are seeing is that there's, there's, there's beginning to, we are beginning to see an increase. But that increase is still not significant to meet the targets that have been put in place by these governing agencies. So just a bit about what we mean when we say somebody's up to date. A fully vaccinated two-year-old has, should have completed four or more doses of diphtheria and titanos, toxoids, and pethosis, three or more doses of polio, poliovirus vaccine, one or more dose of measles or measles, mumps, rubella vaccine, three or more doses of Haemophilus influenzae type B vaccine, three or more doses of hepatitis B, one or more dose of varicella vaccine, and four or more doses of pneumococcal conjugate vaccine. So when a child is able to go through all these series, then we would say the child is fully vaccinated. So this is another chart showing our tri-county immunization rates compared to the state of Oregon. Rates from the previous year, that is 2019, and, and the target for the Regional Health Improvement Plan, as you can see. So Crook County actually has a higher rate compared to the previous year. So they are at 75% now. Previously, they were at 71% prior. So they are higher this year. I mean, that's 2020, not 2021. So the trend is increasing for Crook County, but they still haven't met the Regional Health Improvement Plan target of 80%. The Shute County had a same value the previous year and 2020. It was 71 the previous year and 71 in 2020. We are, we are seeing an increase in trend currently, but we still haven't met the 80% target by the Regional Health Improvement Plan. And Jefferson County is the lowest in the tri-county at 66%. They were at 71% previously. So even though it currently is trending up, but we still have a long way to reach that 80% target. So this, the Shute County Health Services is asking for a, for some money. We are, we are here to present this and also to ask for some money, ask for permission to request for a grant to be able to help these improvement, improve these immunization rates. So my colleague, Adria, is going to go through the next couple of slides and elaborate more on what our ask is.
Thank you, Rita. And thank you, commissioners, for having us come speak today about this important topic. So today, we're coming before you to ask for permission to apply for funding to support the Central Oregon Regional Childhood Immunization Rate Quality Improvement Project through the Central Oregon Health Council. We're proposing to hire either a registered nurse or a medical assistant for a three-year period in order to support AfICs-based ICRIP programs in participating clinics throughout Central Oregon. Just to provide you with a brief overview of what these F and Ms. mean, AfICs stands for Assessments, Feedback, Incentives, and Exchange, and is a program that was created by the U.S. Centers for Disease Control, the U.S. CDC. ICRIP stands for Immunization Quality Improvement for Providers and is the currently supported program from CDC. That's an updated version of the AfICs program. And that is supported currently, ICRIP is currently supported by CDC and the state of Oregon. Let me go to the next slide, please. Thank you, Rita. So this immunization coordinator that we're proposing to hire will work in the tri-county area, as Rita explained, in Jefferson, Crook, and Deshutes County, as well as the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs and in Northern Clamath County, limited to Gilcrest, Sumalt, Crescent, and Crescent Lake Junction. These are areas outside of the tri-county area that have not been previously served by the immunization, early childhood immunization projects that have been happening in the tri-county region. So there's a great need in these communities. We're going to seek to have the immunization coordinator reestablish connections with clinics that previously participated in AfICs grants and also reestablish the program in clinics that may have stopped participating during the COVID pandemic and just haven't been able to reestablish those pre-existing programs. We'll go ahead to the next slide, please. The coordinator will work with the immunization coordinators that are currently working in Crook and Jefferson Counties to support conducting initial assessments, facilitate feedback sessions with at least 25% or more of the clinics in each of the communities annually. Will coordinate incentives and also facilitate exchange portions of the program, which include regular best practice meetings as well as the immunization coalition meetings that occur regularly. Participating clinics will be required to run updated assessments for their clinic on a semi-annual basis with technical assistance from the immunization coordinators as needed. And we'll go to the next slide, please. An assessment of clinic immunization rates is generated by the Oregon Immunization Program. And the data is presented and discussed during feedback meetings that are facilitated by the immunization coordinator or state immunization program staff. The clinics, each of the participating clinics will choose at least two evidence-based strategies for implementation in their clinic over the course of each year of the project. So these are targeted activities to help improve the immunization rates for children in their clinics. The participating clinics will also receive incentives that will include funds that cover the cost of continuing education. that cover the cost of continuing education on the topic of childhood immunizations and the public health significance of early childhood immunizations. And also, the incentive portion of the program will cover educational materials that clinics can use for their staff, for their children, and for the families. We'll jump to the next one, please. The immunization champions at each participating clinic will attend the meeting twice annually for the exchange portion of the program, where they will be able to discuss successes, challenges that they've encountered, and best practices for quality immunization services. So this is really an opportunity for the participating clinics to learn from each other about what has worked well in their communities. This project aligns, as Rita said, with the Regional Health Improvement Plan Work Group Goal of Upstream Prevention, Promotion of Individual Well-Being by Improving the Immunization Rates of Children from Birth to Two Years of Age.
So just an observation, there's two photos of these needles being longer than the diameter of the arms. I mean, I don't know if that's a great promotion item there.
Oh, I know. Like, and this child is looking at it.
Well.
Not crying, though.
Yeah.
Not yet.
We've seen that some kids really like to watch what's happening, and others prefer to look away.
I prefer to look away myself.
Truly, look away.
Yeah. Yeah. Rita, can you go to the next slide, please? Thank you. A major focus of this project will be equity and serving prioritized populations. So we are really going to make an effort to reach out to clinics that serve clients who are vaccine hesitant, children and families who are experiencing houselessness, children who live in rural communities where there isn't easy access to healthcare, those who identify as Black or African-American, Native American, Latinx, or another minority group, and also children who are migrant or receive support from the foster system, the foster care system. And we are going to use the existing Deschutes County COVID-19 Equity Plan, which was drawn up within the last year, as a model for our childhood immunization outreach for this project. And then the last slide. So again, we're asking for permission to apply for funding in the amount of four hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars to support the Central Oregon Regional Childhood Immunization Rate Quality Improvement Project, where again, this funding will be used to support either a registered nurse or a medical assistant for three years in order to support these AfICs-based ICRIP programs in participating clinics throughout Central Oregon. And just a breakdown of that cost, so three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars will be requested over three years to cover personnel costs. Sixty-three thousand dollars is being requested over three years to cover training, cost of training for staff at Crook, Jefferson, and Deschutes County, as well as the immunization champions at the participating clinics. And then a thousand dollars for materials and supplies. I think I said that incorrectly. So a thousand dollars for materials and supplies, and then a stipend to cover immunization coordinators for Crook and Jefferson Counties in the amount of two thousand dollars.
Chair DeBon, I have a question.
Sure. Eric has got a question.
Yes. Will these be a limited duration positions, since it looks like it's limited funding for a couple of years?
Yes. So this is actually for three years. So, I mean, it depends on whether the COHT wants to continue the funding. After three years, we'll be writing a yearly report. So after three years, they would decide whether they want to continue the funding. If we had, if we have met the eighty percent target, they may give us a new target to meet, or they may decide that, okay, eighty percent is enough, so we are going to stop there. So it just depends on what the funders want to do. But for now, we think it would be for the duration of three years. So yes, the short answer is yes.
Great, thank you.
Dr. Baca, I have a question about, there's nineteen different doses up to age two. Are those, are some of those combined when they're given?
Yes. Measles, mumps, rubella is combined.
Right. It says one. You only need one of those, but the other ones?
Correct.
Do you have to get, you have to get four different times you get diphtheria, tetanus, and pertussis? So four different times up to two years old, you get that vaccination all by itself, right?
Yes, but it comes as a one dose. Everything comes in one dose, but you get it four different times. So that is correct.
Okay, so there's nineteen of these. I'm wondering, up to age eighteen, how many different doses would it be? I know we're working on the under two, but how many doses up to age eighteen? Do you, can you just get back to me with that? Because I think I'd asked that question earlier. And I was worried about this, because I know people have not been following up on vaccinations. We, there are truly people in our community that cannot be vaccinated. They have other issues going on. And I had asked about eight months ago to have a billboard put up to remind people of the critical thing for your children under two. That, you know.
Absolutely. I'm trying to find that information right now. But some of the vaccines, after two years, you don't receive them. Some of them, after five years, you don't receive them any longer. But I don't know from the top of my head whether MMR is one of those that you stop receiving after two years. But I'll probably give that information to you before the end of this meeting or follow up with that answer.
Okay, thank you so much. I know that originally Oregon was pretty blue. It was pretty vaccinated in two thousand. And today's state chart is definitely, it's at a different story. So thank you for this presentation. But I really did think we should have done a billboard. I'd asked for that. I just, you know, like, parents drive by it. They say, oh, yeah, I've got to get, I've got to, I've got to get my kids back into their vaccination. You know, there's a lot of things there that truly we don't want to bring back.
And Commissioner DeRia, you're on the Central Oregon Health Council?
Yes, I am. And I was worried about this months ago.
I just.
Months ago, like, eight months ago, I know at least. And I kept saying, we need a billboard, we need something. And, you know, I realized, like, Gilchrist is actually in Clamath County. That's not going to help our Deschutes number, but still, it's our community. So anyway, yes, Health Council been very aware of this.
Is this, did the Central Oregon Health Council invite this proposal under a specific program or category of grant that they have? Or is this, is it just kind of wide open? What, what, what they, what they might be looking for, or what they, you know, what might, what might be eligible for a grant from the Central Oregon Health Council?
Yeah, this was, this is specifically responding to a request for proposal to increase the childhood immunization rates in Central Oregon. And actually, they outlined a lot of these metrics that we've presented, identifying them as critical needs in our community. And their proposal also did include extending beyond the borders of the tri-county area. I think, as Commissioner Adair mentioned, although they're not within the borders of the counties, they are part of our community.
They're part of the Health Council area. Yeah, they're, they're part of the coverage for the Health Council. I mean, it's critical. I've been to the clinics down in North Clamath. So I know we need, you know, we definitely have to respect their boundaries.
So if we have a registered nurse or a medical assistant on staff, are they going to be providing immunization shots, or just getting the clinics and promoting?
Yeah, so they are not actually going to be providing immunizations. Their role, their role will be serving as a liaison with other community partners like Pacific Source and cleaning up their data, making sure that they reach out to providers who have children in their registry or their database that are not up to date. So calling these parents to come in with their kids to get them vaccinated. So that provider would actually just be making sure other people are immunizing children. But, I mean, if there's a need for her to do that, we, the county also provides immunization. So people come into the county with their kids. We have an immunization coordinator who does that job. So, I mean, she may be able to assist that immunization coordinator, but this, that is not her core responsibility.
Great. So as I say, this came up, you know, for this meeting, and it is a quality improvement project by the Central Oregon Health Council, and is their support?
I move approval of this grant application to the Central Oregon Health Council for a Central Oregon Regional Childhood Immunization Rate Quality Improvement Project.
Can we just add in the amount of four hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars, and I'll second it?
Sounds good.
Okay, that's been agreed upon, and that's your second?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
And chair votes, yes. Thank you very much. We got it right through today for you.
Thank you so much, commissioners, and thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing this project forward.
So at this time, other items. And we've got our kind of pending discussion from Monday on Joint Office of Homeless Coordination. There's a, if we want to dive right into this, you want to kind of lay out what we did, Eric?
Yes. This is a follow-up to the board discussion on Monday about the letter to AOC and LOC. The changes that I handed out, there are changes in red that were changes that Commissioner DeBon and I worked on, or I call them county changes. And then the changes in blue are the recommended changes from the city of Bend. City manager Eric King worked with Mayor Russell and a couple of councilors on those changes.
So I'll work up from the bottom. So Commissioner Chang, you mentioned, you know, at the bottom, but it ended up being at the bottom. So it's an ask for land, and it was just, we were kind of trying to wordsmith. And then, as I say, the city came back with some changes, you know, managed locations and unsanctioned encampment. So it's kind of funny, because we were, I was looking at them like, well, I don't know exactly what to use words, and then it came back like that. So if we work our way up from the bottom, is there support for that paragraph? So in addition, we look forward to working with AOC, LOC, and the state legislators to create flexibility in our land use system to allow for managed locations for people who are houseless, as well as spots for campers, RV vans. We simply need more options to provide shelter and move away from unsanctioned encampments on public land. So it's kind of a.
Are they okay with that sentence?
Well, yeah, so this is in, the blue are the slight word changes from this. And it was a, the mayor plus two councilors and Eric King, is my understanding. So a subset of the council reviewed it.
My request was to have this paragraph at the end, and I'm okay with that.
Well, that's where it ended up. Okay. So then, if we go from the top to bottom, then, you know, was changed, is, in that one sentence, the purpose of this, of this task force is to inform the city and county and collaborative opportunities and develop actions toward ending houselessness. So I think that's just kind of a wordsmithing item. The next paragraph, content. And I'll, I'll just kind of read the whole thing, so we can see if it all hangs together. "The group recently completed work on the following tools to improve coordination and outcomes related to homelessness." So notice, we're talking houseless and homeless in different paragraphs here. I don't know if that's a wordsmith item we want to touch base on. "A community vision, mission statement, and milestones in strategic plan." So we started with the concept of striking these, and as I say, this is for discussion. I don't know that we want to strike everything here. But if we jump over and say, "A community vision, mission statement, milestones, and strategic plan, we see participation with the City-County Homeless Coordination Pilot Program as an important next step to implement a strategic plan and improve our local coordinated homeless response." And as I say, is there going to be an attached draft of the proposed homeless and draft strategic plan? So, you know, that's why we're trying to get this landed. It was like, well, maybe we've dropped the whole thing. You know, does it read okay without any of that?
I think it's fine not to include a draft.
Since we don't really have the draft, I, yes.
Well, yeah, so I mean, that's what we were. Okay, yeah, so.
The letter is due, what is it, tomorrow?
Friday.
Oh, yeah, we got two whole days.
Okay, great. We've got two days.
Since the vision, mission, milestones, and strategies are basically what has been completed for the strategic plan? I mean, we could use clarifying, you know, clarify the language there to say that. The strategic plan, we have not completed the strategic, strategic plan. There's, there's a whole bunch of action items that will be figured out in the next two weeks. But so, I mean, to kind of, like, I'm happy to submit this as, as drafted here with those strike-throughs. Or if we wanted to clarify, I think we could say, you know, you know, but the community vision, mission statement, milestones, and strategies that are part of a strategic plan have, have been completed, or something like that.
So, yeah, let's just leave it like this. I don't know that it'd add a lot of content, you know.
I think, I think we need to leave it.
Okay, yeah, so that, let's go there. So that's wordsmithing that may not add a lot more, is my thought. And then I'll just kind of read the next two paragraphs through as we're reading it. "Deschutes County Commissioners and City of Bend Councilors are committed to the short and long-term commitment of Joint Housing Office, support the notion that our organizations need to seek out or provide funding after the first two years of state funding, and have reviewed and support the general draft framework of the bill as proposed."
And just to comment on that paragraph, that's what was specifically asked for by the AOC/LOC letter.
Yeah, so those are, that's commitments there.
And those were the four bullet points that Commissioner Chang referred to on Monday of that letter.
Yeah, no, I, I really appreciate that, this paragraph being in here. I mean, we could, we could, again, minor wordsmithing, but we could say something besides, "are committed to the short and long-term commitment." But, you know, it's, it's fine, if we want to, if we want to just go with it.
Are you comfortable with that, Commissioner Adair? So as I was saying, you know, if this gets funded and we create a joint office, we like the idea of doing this for, for a long time, or is providing these services, and they're needed?
Well, I always believe in reviewing something. Is it really, are we doing something that's effective? You know, it's always nice to know, okay, what we're doing is effective. It is working. And if it's not working, we don't want to continue on, right? So, yeah, we will seek out or provide funding, yes.
So there's enough wiggle room there to.
Right. Is there enough wiggle room? Yes. Supports the notion. Yeah, that sounds very.
I mean, we could insert in here somewhere that the idea that there'll be evaluation of the, of the effort or in the program.
Well, I think that's implied. I mean, you know, that's what we do every year. It's a budget review annually at the county level and all that. Okay, so the next paragraph. "The Board of Commissioners and City Councilors will have a joint meeting in January to review a draft IGA that will outline the structure of the Joint Housing Office and roles and responsibilities of the city and county. Finally, the other cities in Deschutes County, Redmond, Lepine, and Sisters have expressed interest in participating in the Joint Housing Office." So we did, I received a letter from the city manager of City of Lepine. I don't know that I forwarded it, or did anybody else see that? Yeah, so I mean, it was just a letter that, you know, saying, "As the manager, we're going to be interested." Because he didn't have their council behind, you know, a discussion with the council, but it was acknowledging at least.
And on that point, if the board would like, if the letter is approved and finalized, I'd be happy to send copies of the letter to the city managers of the three other cities and ask them to forward it to their mayors and council.
Yeah, because, yeah, once it's an agenda item at a city council meeting, then they can, you know, discuss it right there.
They'd probably appreciate getting a copy of the letter and seeing their inclusion.
One question I have about this paragraph and the prior one is, is this terminology, the Joint Housing Office, what was used in the LOC, AOC kind of invitation letter? Because I, I thought we were talking about a joint homelessness office, but if they, if they specifically called this program the Joint Housing Office Pilot, then, you know, we should follow what they, what they.
Yeah, let me, I'll double-check. I think I pulled it from the. Yeah, let me, I'll double check. I think I pulled it from the draft legislation, the legislative bill concept, but I'll look it up real quick.
Invitation to join pilot project on city-county coordinated homeless response. I just, I don't know that it's been named specifically in here.
The top of the draft legislation says, "City/County homeless coordination pilot."
Yeah, so it's, probably the committee's not named, you know, the name of...
Right, right. I mean, because if we're calling it a joint housing office, I mean, that to me implies something broader, but...
Let me pull up the AOC.
I'm open to, I'm open to being persuaded on that as a title, but I think it's, I think it's different than what the legislation concepts have been talking about so far.
Any thoughts, Molly, on the name of the names?
I was just looking back at some documentation. I thought it was the Joint Office of Homelessness, but I was just going to look back and see in my files what we have it as.
Yeah, that, and I, sorry I didn't bring the staff memo from Monday, but, you know, I feel like the AOC/LOC invitation letter, you know, included specific language. And I mean, you know, I think that this, you know, when we're talking about this joint office, I think we're trying to, you know, it, its purpose is to help us build capacity both on the shelter and transitional housing end, but also on the services end. So if you call it the Joint Housing Office, I don't think that that really captures the service provision component. So it just doesn't seem like the...
It says homeless coordination pilot is what their, the overall title of it is.
Yeah, the LOC letter refers to...
How about, that'd be a great discussion at a January meeting. We could put a whole agenda item for a whole, a whole hour, between seven councilors, three commissioners, and talk about it for...
I mean, I think that's just a, you know, like, I think that's just a typo, and, you know, I'd like to change it to homelessness at this point, but...
Okay, and what are you talking about specifically in the letter now? That paragraph...
In the first line, it says homeless coordination pilot, so we've got it right there.
One, two, three...
A joint housing office?
Fourth paragraph, first sentence, second paragraph, I guess those are both, second paragraph, second sentence.
Would the board like me to change that to be consistent with the LOC, AOC letter language?
Is it a, is it a problem in terms of coordination with the City of Bend before the timeline of...
No, no.
That it's due?
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Homelessness office is what they're calling it on the solutions with the bill.
And what are you, what are you proposing? I'm lost.
Just, instead of it saying joint housing office, for it to say joint homelessness office.
That's what it should say, homelessness office.
Okay, got it.
Homelessness office.
Should we use homelessness and houseless back and forth there, or is there any? Well, yeah, I mean, it's just a learning the terminology. Is it, is it the same thing, or is it slightly different, I guess? Is homelessness and houselessness different, Molly?
It's the same thing, so just homelessness or houselessness. And I think there's some, there might be some minor things, but I think given that they use homelessness office on homelessness in the bill, that's probably what we should call it at this point. But there, it's, we, people do use them interchangeably.
So actions towards ending houselessness, so it's not calling it anything, it's just referring to, that's fine, okay, leaving it.
That's not a capital H label, it's a...
Okay, so then there's support for these edits, or, you know, I'm thinking there is, let's make sure there is, support for these edits, and I want to thank the city councilors for reviewing this yesterday, getting some feedback. Eric, thank you very much for helping me work through some of these topics. As I say, once we started really looking at that middle paragraph, we're like, what if we just remove part of it, and then, you know, it kind of says the same thing, but there's just a few little statements.
As long as we, as long as we recognize the work that's been done by the Emergency Homeless Task Force and say that we're ready to move forward with next steps, I think that's fine.
Well, so then, yeah, let's finalize this letter and then have a little bit of discussion on that. Is there support for the letter as proposed?
Yes, changed, sure.
With that...
You want to make that motion?
With, with the county's revisions, the City of Bend's revisions, and the, that word housing changed to homelessness, I would move approval of this joint letter to LOC and AOC from Deschutes County and the City of Bend.
I'll second it.
And it's been seconded. Okay, any other discussion? C-9, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Deere?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. So other business on this, then. So it was implied that, you know, we didn't follow the process, where you mentioned that to me. Media picked it up, it's like, well, maybe the other commissioners weren't even paying attention. We got to be careful with that. I mean, we're a three-person team. I'm here to support the efforts. We're a board that makes one decision as three, and I feel like that was kind of a low blow saying that, I mean...
Well, I feel like saying, we didn't have any input on this, it was a low blow. So that's where my comment came from. It was in response to not acknowledging that you had any opportunity to engage on the EHTF.
Well, and I'm, so then, yeah, let's make sure we're on the same page, because when there's a piece of paper that says, "This is the plan," and you, we're acknowledging it here, there's a plan, that plan has not been laid out on the table for three of us to say, yes, this is the plan that Board of Commissioners, three people representing the people, agree upon. It's a plan that's out there, but we haven't accepted or acknowledged the plan officially. So I'm saying, this is the process, how are we going to get there?
And you received copies of the plan, and it says draft all over it. And I started the conversation of this letter yesterday by parsing out for everyone what has been done on that strategic plan already, and what still needs to be done, and that it was still in draft form. And I actually invited the discussion of clarifying that in the letter, you know. How far along is that strategic plan?
Well, so, remember, there's a letter, a line in here that says, "Our organizations are ready to take the next step and implement the strategic plan created by the Emergency Homeless Task Force." And that, that item was struck on there. We have work to do. But by implying that, you know, it's been ignored or unaccepted, I mean, that's, that was a bad situation.
I was responding to your comment that I haven't seen this, and we didn't get any input on this, which is not true. So...
Well, let's work together.
Do you want to discuss that further?
I'm offering to work together.
I would love to work together on these issues.
And there may be different opinions that proceed down a path. So then, how do three people proceed if there's different opinions?
There's different, there are different approaches, there are different philosophies on this, but there is the fact of what work has been done and who has had the opportunity to engage in it. So as long as we stick to the facts, where there are facts, and then acknowledge that there are differences in perspective, I would be happy to work with you.
Isn't the...
And I actually have a proposal for a specific, you know, action item that I would like to propose that we move forward on working on together.
Okay, well, so one, one topic then. I think the art of the political public meeting is having that robust discussion and coming to that, you know, common or agreed upon, or at least two-to-one vote on whatever topic it is. And I still feel like you're saying, the facts that you define are the ones that we're proceeding with, and you better take it or leave it. I'm just acknowledging, I mean, it's still, it feels like you're telling us how to proceed and not selling it and getting buy-in.
No, I was, I was correcting a misstatement about how, what has happened. That's not telling you how to proceed.
Let's work together. That's, I'm, that's why, that's why...
I would be happy to. Are you ready for a proposal?
Sure.
Okay, so there has been repeated interest in exploring this 11-acre property outside of town, outside of City of Bend, out Highway 20. I think we should start exploring that. And if we want to explore that together as a county, we have, up here on the dais, we have, I have heard frequent comments about other proposals that, that proposal should have been vetted with landowners, surrounding adjacent landowners first, before people, you know, kind of got five steps down the path to explore. Bend proposals or others? Um, you know, it's come up in Sisters, it's come up in, you know, it's come up in Redmond discussions. So I guess I would ask, if we, if we're serious about exploring that 11 acres, if we're serious about pushing for policy changes at the state level to allow us to do something out there, that we do the work on surveying adjacent landowners on their support, and for what they would support, before we invest a whole lot of additional time and effort into that. Because that is what we have said, we wish that all sorts of other proposals, proposers would have done first. And if we do that work, you know, survey those adjacent landowners, and they say they welcome it, and they kind of can see what it looks like, or if their level of opposition is mitigatable, then I'm happy to proceed with exploring, you know, what we, what we ask, what kind of a pilot or whatever, we ask the state legislature to enable us to do.
Kristi was going to bring that up next Wednesday on the agenda, so we don't have a meeting on Monday. And, you know, definitely, I'm sure, I know there isn't a manufacturing plant there, but, you know, what else is there? Truly, it's, it's Benzone EFU, so that's, that puts it on the other side of the land use in the state. It is right by Highway 20, and whatever we were going to do together, I think it's really important that this does not turn into Huddle Road. This, you know, there are standards there, but it does have an opportunity.
Yeah, it would be an authorized encampment and managed encampment as opposed to an unauthorized.
Right.
But the, you know, my emphasis here is that we have repeatedly said that other proponents of outdoor shelter should have consulted all of the adjacent landowners and the neighborhood prior to investing a lot of effort and resources into any given proposal. So I think we should do the same thing.
For just that one location, or?
If that's...
Other possible...
What about, what about 10 acres?
That's the one, the 10 acres is within, is my understa, the 10 acres in Redmond, my understanding is that's within the City of Redmond, and there aren't land use issues associated with that.
It's county land within the city.
There's a massive infrastructure challenge with developing something out there, but that's not something that we need state land use approval for.
What about, are you referring to just that one location, or others also?
If you want to, if you want to put forward other locations of county-owned properties, then we could do the same thing for any of those sites.
Yeah, so it was mentioned that that'll come around next week?
Yes.
But, you know, again, emphasis on the point that if we are, if we are, if we're saying to people, you should have done your homework first with the adjacent landowners, we will need to do the exact same thing. And...
So, yeah, I mean, so now I'm receiving this as, we're going to go try to do something, and I'm going to show you how bad it's going to be. I mean, it's, I feel like you're trying to set us up. I don't know, I don't feel comfortable with how you're presenting this.
Nope. I, I've heard, I've heard a proposal put on the table. You asked me just now to work with you to advance things. I actually want to see something get done. And I think, I think that the recommendation that proposed outdoor shelter gets vetted with a neighborhood is, is an appropriate first step, is actually a good one. I think it's a, is a really smart approach to this, and so I'm just asking that we apply this standard to anything that we are the primary proponent of. There is no, there is no non-governmental agency that is, a non-governmental organization that is asking us to work on those 11 acres out east of town. That is a proposal that has come from us. We are the proponents, and so it's incumbent on us to do the work to shape up the idea.
Well, Commissioner Deere, you were mentioned for next week, yeah, let's bring that around.
It's coming on Wednesday. You know, I'm not, you know, as far as reaching out to the owners, you know, it's definitely brought up for the agenda.
Executive session or regular session?
What?
Is the request for this to come back to the board in executive session or regular session?
This is our regular session now, and a specific parcel's been discussed.
Right, well, it could be brought up in regular then, I guess.
Yeah, it certainly could. There might be a way to fit it in as an executive session if we're talking about an actual transaction, but if we're just discussing potential sites and some of the potential objections or concerns, that probably doesn't fit under executive session directly.
Okay, I know Sharon's listening, thank you. And Kristi?
So it sounds like regular session?
Yes.
All right.
Yep. Okay, so that was approving a letter. Final version will be published today for signature and good follow-on discussion. Is there any other items?
Commissioner DeBonne, I thought you had one on...
Oh, I do. Oh, see, this happens every time. So, okay, I thank you so much. And I don't have the letter prepared. So I sent an email referring to Lapine, asked to the Oregon Park District, Park and Rec District, whatever it's called, $100,000 grant, and it is truly a two-acre location on city land at the edge of their city, going out to public lands. Remember, the question was asked about, you know, how much of a connection is there between there and Roseland? Really, it just goes to public land at that point, and there's existing trails, so it's not anything to do with the roads at all. This is an effort by the mayor of the City of Lapine that wants to, if this comes to fruition, where they can get some resources to scratch out this location, then there would be a discussion about, is there an authorized path, like Point A to Point B from that location, down Reed Road to the gas station, is really the tangible thing. So somebody could come off the forest, get to a gas station, refuel without having to park their rig, get in their pickup truck, drive, fill a tank, and go back. So that's really the only scope of this. As I say, I will sign a letter of support as one commissioner, and the request is, would the three of us sign a letter of support? As I say, I didn't even prepare from last night to tonight about a new version of the letter, but it could come out if there's support.
Okay, I just need to, like, take a look at it.
Yeah, okay. And, yeah, so as I say, this keeps slipping, this, as I say, I was getting the letter back and forth from the city.
Is there a deadline for this?
Uh, yeah, it was last week, but they'll take a letter of recommendation and put it on file if we still want to do it. So, yeah, I mean, it truly was last week, and...
So we've already missed the deadline, so...
Well, this is just a letter of recommendation.
They take, if they take letters of support after the deadline, then, then we're good. Do we have any sense of how long until they do their review process for this?
Oh, no, I don't have...
I mean, I would guess we'd have at least a few weeks, because it's going to take a little time to sort.
Well, yeah, I mean, it'll probably slow it down if we don't get a letter in at this point. So, I mean, it's just, it was just a request, and as I say, thank you very much for reminding me. I kind of half did it again today, it's just been busy. Yeah, for the concept.
I would like to review it and, you know, review a draft letter and...
Well, yeah, so we're in the same spot we were last time. If we end up signing a letter before the next meeting, yeah, so I'll get a draft letter going. Now we know more information, and I've talked about it in a public meeting, and I'll get a draft finalized, and it'll be for the three commissioners or one commissioner, which we have the authority to do. And really, this is kind of that, you know, if the state buys into it, then the city will proceed with... the city will proceed with talking about, would they authorize that Point A to Point B connection to the gas station, because that's really the only thing, down Reed Road, but if they don't fund it, then they won't have that discussion, so that's where it's at.
And I'm, I know I had questions, and I can't remember whether I explicitly asked them to people, or I feel like I did, I sent an email, but.
Yeah, as I say, this is.
But, but, you know, one of, you know, one, you know, basic, basic question is, is this a place where there are existing trails, and we just want to create a more formal trailhead, or are we, or is the proposal to create a new, you know, like, a, a new trail connection to this trail system, because the one, you know, there's already lots of people using it this way, and we just want to kind of, you know, make it a nicer parking lot and things like that, that's, that's, you know, like, a much less, it's much less of a big question than you creating a new trail.
So, there, in the last couple of years, the Chamber of Commerce and Coordination with the, the side-by-side people, there have been kind of rallies, you know, from the edge of town, this gives a home for the, for the, for the people that have a rig, they unload and they go at the edge of town, so, yeah, I mean, there's, there's existing traveled areas, I don't know that they're, you know, designated paths, this is probably overland travel more than, you know, down a specific dirt road, well, not really. So, some of the local stuff will be overland travel, the rest is, you know, once you find a dirt road, then you keep going down it, but, yeah, this is the edge of Lapine.
And the, the overland travel activity, that's on federal land, or?
Yeah, so what I'm referring to is if you, if you zoom in, in fact, I was looking for the maps, that's what the email I sent yesterday, I mean, there's just these, you know, kind of spider web of paths right from that area, but as soon as you get out a little farther, then it becomes, you know, either there's dirt road or not, just a little bit farther out of town.
Oh, and one thing we need to bring up for next Wednesday's agenda, since we do not have a meeting on Monday, is the chamber funding with Greg, the chambers haven't been funded, and.
So, I followed that to ground, it's going to stay as part of this process, I talked to Chamber Director and Sisters yesterday about, well, he did, and I talked with him the day before, but we're going to keep, I support keeping it part of the process.
Okay, so when are they going to get funded, then?
COIC's effort with everybody.
But what date is that?
I don't have that information, but it's coming around.
I know, it's just that they're wondering, you know, it seems like, okay, it seems, we're like, is it going to happen before year end? Does anybody know?
Let's, let's get an update from.
I think we need an update.
COIC, because remember, that's one of the buckets that we had for the ARPA dollars, and just the timing, because anybody that's going to do that process is going to want to know that information.
I mean, maybe you haven't noticed, but I am seeing restaurants shutting their hours back const, I mean, it's just, like, you've got to call before you go anywhere now, yeah, the workforce has really incredibly minimized, and I, so worry about our small businesses, are they going to be able to survive? And, you know, we need to know when this funding's going.
Yeah, so whoever's running that program at COIC, just a quick update, and then I mix them Monday afternoon and be fine, so.
Okay.
I mean, remember last year, we gave out the checks before Christmas, and I know people were crying, and it wasn't that much money, but they were crying, truly, it's, and it's, it's not good out there right now. If you're trying to run a small business and you're working 100 days in a row, and you, you know, you can't get people, I, I worry about those, those owners, how many of them are actually going to be able to survive?
All right, we'll check in with COIC on the status of chamber funding.
Okay.
All, all funding, actually, and, you know, whatever's underneath that.
I will follow through the proposed letter for Lapine, and we'll see where it goes. Is there anything else, any other items? Seeing none, meeting adjourned.